All right, good morning, everybody. It's eight thirty. We'll call this morning's meeting to order. Our first item is the approval of the agenda, and we do have a couple of agenda additions. One is to ratify Resolution 2017 dash twenty-four, which is declaring a state of emergency due to severe weather. And then we also have an amendment to the Southeast Human Service Purchases service agreement. And we have a third one, Brian, with Mr. Overbaugh. Are you gonna do that in?
Just do that during reports is what I plan it for.
Right, very good.
Moving to approve with the additions.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same. Motion carried. Decisions to be heard. Do you have any decisions to be heard this morning on items not on the agenda? Decisions to be heard. So then we'll move on to approval of bills and vouchers.
Move, go, approve.
Motion, a second. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Approval of minutes from June twenty-seventh and July sixth. So we have a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. We'll do our eight thirty-five item, and that's the recognition of our hometown hero award, Kurt Cannon, and Kim is here to talk about this. We have a celebrity amongst us this morning.
Yeah. There was only one person nominated.
Didn't have to say it.
And they struggled with the vote at that day.
It was a tough call.
I don't know if it passed, sent around or...
I think maybe, maybe she'll wanna get a picture of you holding it up maybe too.
Okay, we'll get that after. Anyhow, the hometown heroes, this is their third year, and then you get nominated, which Kim nominated me, and then there was a total of five vets, I believe all of them were.
Yep.
And so then each of them had to stand on stage and read, and then I'll tell ya, then they selected one at the very end to receive the ultimate award, so. Wow, that was me, too. So, sorry. Five women had to choose that one. But this is the quilt of valor that the one of the five got.
Nice.
And that's made by the ultimate pros piecers. Yeah, so. And then I have to get the literature on it, but each row represents or signifies something. They write it up there, but, so, a lot of hard work. Very nice. I have a tough time finding a wall for that thing.
Oh, you won't.
Yeah, it's a bed, you're supposed to find it. Yeah, supposed to, but I'm not gonna sleep with it.
So you were nominated for this?
Yep, by my, our tribe. We have a tribe, my sister-in-law and myself, so.
Okay.
And then there was good donations from DNS Beverages, too, that I thought I shouldn't bring in here.
That's a Monday.
Yeah, those are still in the car, by the way. But it's the new Budweiser bottles for the veterans, camouflaged, that signify.
Well, when we heard about this happening, and this presentation was gonna be given to you out at the fair, we knew that there was a lot of people who would not be able to attend the fair, and there's a lot of people in Clay County who would be interested to hear this, so we invited you here, we wanted you here to share the story with everybody else, and we're, wanna congratulate you.
Thank you.
On receiving that, and it's, thank you for nominating for this as well deserved.
Did you want me to read what I wrote?
Sure, yes, yeah. Why don't you do that?
My brother-in-law Curtis Cannon first joined the Army National Guard as a young man in college in the nineteen-eighties. He served in several guard units, including ones in the Twin Cities and Camp Ripley, rising to the rank of major over time. Prior to retiring from the Guard, he was deployed to Iraq for eighteen months. Currently, he continues to tirelessly serve his fellow soldiers, young and old, in his role as the Veteran Service Officer for Clay County. He helps veterans to navigate the challenges they face following deployment, including finding affordable housing, locating employment that matches their abilities, and understanding the services they need and how to apply for them. His commitment goes beyond the workplace as he reaches out to veterans wherever he is, during a scheduled workday or not, to educate them and help them in whatever way is needed. Sometimes it is just a patient, listening ear, other times it is much more. Truly, his commitment to the military has been one he has carried throughout his adult life, and the care and compassion he exhibits towards those who have served sets a fine example for all of us to follow.
Congratulations.
I didn't even help her with that.
You didn't know?
No, I did not know. There you have it.
Congratulations.
All that will be in my office and continue to carry on.
Yep.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Want a picture, Bonnie?
There you go.
He didn't show that up.
Oh.
Here.
Probably TV, so my room might have lost some.
Yeah.
Tell us you have to go to a certain channel to see it.
YouTube.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're slightly ahead of schedule, so I think we'll get Brian, do you wanna come up, Brian, and we'll take care of yours? I'll get you taken care of, so we'll get back to your...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Got a few things. I know it's stored damage on the eleventh, but I did, we did declare a state of emergency. Kevin did it. He has authority from the state statute to do that. And everybody get a copy of that resolution?
Yeah.
I do not need any other action, but I think it's probably a good idea to...
Yes.
So if you wanna do that, that would be great.
Yeah, I think what, what we'd still like is to have the board ratify the resolution that I signed earlier, so we have a motion to do that.
So move, second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion's carried, okay.
Okay, well, everybody is pretty much well aware of the damage, and it was pretty much pertaining to the city of Eulon. We did have a lot of damage on the county, a lot of rural homesteads. No homes actually that were damaged severely. Some had minor damage, but, you know, again, it was mostly trees. The power company's Otter Tail, which has the city of Eulon, and then Wild Rice, which is in the rural areas out there, they sustained a lot of damage. Otter Tail at least hit a hundred thousand, and that's within the city of Eulon, and then Wild Rice came up first and said they had like twenty thousand dollars up to seventy thousand. So that, with the damage, also with the city of Eulon, they had close to a hundred thousand dollars worth of damage easily. Their park was pretty much destroyed. They have not touched that. They've pretty much taken care of the city itself right now. And I've talked to the mayor several different times, and they're in the process of somebody get somebody out there and estimate, get a private contractor out there. So with that state of emergency that you basically declared, the process started for me to notify the state. I did a preliminary damage assessment, and we'll send up to the state. It's a little over two hundred thousand dollars. Our threshold for a state disaster is a hundred and ten thousand, so we met that. So the next thing that'll happen is that the state will review it and either declare it or look at it as a state disaster or a federal disaster. I'm assuming it's gonna be a state because this ain't gonna go federal by any means.
Right.
So they will notify me, and then saying that we'll, we'll look at it as a state disaster, then I'll request them to come out and do a damage assessment. So within, hopefully, the next two weeks, they'll come out and do that. Then we'll take care of that, get all that done, get all the information, verify the damage, and get, and they'll decide if we should declare, or we should request from the governor a state disaster. From then, it would require board action again. So I'll come back, and we'll know the numbers, and then the chairman...
That'll happen after they do a preliminary.
Correct, yep. And the chairman of the U of U has signed a letter, said, up to the state of Minnesota, requesting from the governor a state disaster. So if that all goes through, they will reimburse the applicants at least seventy-five percent of the damages. So that's kinda where we're at. It was a lot of, they cleaned up pretty quick there, and a lot of it, a lot of private citizens came in the next day, even that night, and took care of a lot of it. All the trees and everything has, has been taken to one location and has been piled up on city property. They took care of that, you know, basically without any direction, so, again, the state can reimburse for how many poundage there is there, but they, they got a formula, they'll, they'll do that, so. And most, everybody has electricity out there now, so. So we're looking pretty good, and everybody wants to see that storm cloud come through.
Yes.
It was not pretty. Got out to Felton, and then, oh, most of our deputies were up in Eulon when it hit. And it, the Weather Service said it was not officially a tornado in the city of Eulon or in that area, but they thought, yes, it could possibly, it just didn't touch down. So, and I'm assuming, they had a lot of relatives up there, and a lot of chainsaws going, and the trees are twisted. There's, you know, it's not a straight wind by any means. It definitely was a tornado, so it could've been a lot worse, but a lot of damage, so it'll take a little while to get back on their feet, so.
Well, we're glad you were on top of it, Brian. Thank you for doing that.
But I do have a little video.
Yeah, let's see it.
On YouTube, I don't know if you guys wanna watch it or not.
Yeah, I've seen it, but let's...
You seen it?
Everybody else see it. I wanna see it.
This is up by the park along Highway thirty-two. We're getting into the state. I'm surprised there weren't roofs taken off of that one. So it's more the east side than if it got hit worse than anybody. The highway department was up there that night, helping coming up the streets. They were basically all blocked.
No injuries either, right?
Nope. And like a hundred fifty photos, so if anybody wants, anybody wants to see the photos, let me know.
So was this first thing the next morning when this was taken?
Yes. Wednesday morning.
Probably that same system that hit Hills realizations.
Yes, yeah.
That's about a lot of trees.
Oh, yeah.
Do a lot of repack.
And, you know, this state disaster for utilities wouldn't affect July first. They didn't notify them all before that this would happen. Of course, they might call them to let them know, copy the one, they had no idea. Otter Tail's a pretty big corporation, so it takes a while to get down. Wild Rice, they were on top of it. It don't take very long to get fifty thousand dollars of damage, and the power company...
No.
Ten poles, basically, they said. So we, let's hope we don't have a lot of these, but I'm just...
Northern County.
They have any damage to the green elevator?
No, there was not, but in the rural areas, there's a lot of green bins that were destroyed.
Well, Brian, thank you for reading the efforts on that emergency declaration, and to your department for the work you guys did up there in assisting the citizens.
Well, thank you, and I'll keep you informed.
Thank you, Brian.
I'll keep you informed.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, Tim. Next, we have a budget presentation from our Technology Services Department, Tim Dent, Director. Good morning, Tim.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, if you want to follow along on his, it's on page fifteen on that booklet that I...
Thank you.
That paper that I sent out to you. Or handed out this morning, I should say.
Okay, whenever you're ready, Tim.
All right. Not a lot of changes from last year. Some modest changes due to steps in salaries and benefits. Increase in the sixty-two, seventy-one other professional services. The big increase there was due to the increase in our state of Minnesota internet charges. It went from seventeen hundred to twenty-one hundred dollars per month. Other things that come out of sixty-two, seventy-one are like fiber optic costs, data cabling, if we have to have electrical cabling done, any migrations and upgrades we do, off-site backup services, cell phone bills, those types of things. Six-three-oh-two is our hardware maintenance and repair. The main items in there are hardware contracts and any type of printer repair, server repairs that are non, non-contract repairs come out of that line item. And I'd originally asked for some additional dollars in the equipment, over five hundred. We, after we met last week with Brian and Lori, we decided to take those out. I put those in there for some anticipated equipment costs for the jail, and...
Are they, are they going into the FFE then, or...
Yes, Mr. Chair, we felt they were one-time costs, and we've had extensive discussions with you about that, thinking that one-time cost should be financed elsewhere.
Okay. Jim, are you...
No, that was, that was pretty much the highlights.
What are you anticipating workload on the part of your, your group for dealing with the LEC and the jail, 'cause a lot of that's gonna transpire in two thousand seven, or two thousand eighteen?
Right, we, we did have some discussion on that. I had originally added a, additional staff member for next year. Just because we don't, we don't know for sure what those impacts are gonna be on our department. Our, the staff is very busy already. So, you know, since the jail probably won't be completely operational till twenty nineteen or so, we, we kinda decided we would, we'd take that position out and give it some more discussion next year.
Okay.
And see if, see how things go, and see if we need to have that. There's also a possibility, we don't know yet at this point, that we might have some additional revenues due to the caseworks project, too.
Okay.
And those we don't know either, and those we will know by, by next year, budgeting times.
I guess my question was, was more in, in line with, you know, your work is gonna happen before the jail opens, you know, so I just, you know, again, I'm looking at potential one-time issues that can come up. Somebody's gotta be overseeing all of these lines being put in, and...
Oh, yeah, definitely. You know, of course, we're not the ones installing it, but we'll...
Okay.
We'll be going into the data closets, you know, we'll have to purchase new switches, you know, get all of our fiber optics hooked up, get all the systems ready for when they do move in. I'm actually more concerned about when it is occupied, just the all additional, the additional technology they have in all their conference rooms and the other additional technology capabilities they have over there. So, and we don't know, I don't think we know yet what our responsibility as an IT department's gonna be yet for those facilities.
Okay. Well, there's time for that, though.
Yeah, I...
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I, I'm glad you brought that up, because did, Tim did have one additional position, as he indicated, in there, and we could certainly put that back in if there is a concern of the time he, I'll say voluntarily after discussion, took it out, thought it was maybe a little premature, but I guess if there's any hesitation in there, we can certainly put that back in.
Based on the numbers I am seeing, it's, he can do without it, though.
I'm coming on up. I do appreciate that you've been sensitive to having a request for staffing, and I'm looking at what your salary overtime has been budgeted in and what you've actually used, and, and I think it is important to kinda maybe have the wait and see how much it's gonna take, and if it takes a little bit of overtime, since we do have it budgeted in there, and you really haven't used hardly a fourth of what you've got budgeted, I appreciate that.
All right. Any other comments? Thank you, Tim.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have a budget presentation from Information Services, Mark Sloan, Director.
Morning.
Good morning, Mark.
And Mr. Chair, that's the next, page sixteen.
Thank you.
Before I started, I was gonna just mention, if you notice, last week our projector failed.
Yes.
So we were able to find a lesser capable one that we've installed temporarily, so it, it's working, but we have a new one on order, so in a few weeks, you'll see a whole new setup up there. It's gonna be much better, I'm hoping. Okay. So our, our budget for two thousand eighteen is relatively the same as we did this year. We go through everything we have, all the, all the line items we have, and we look at what we're spending and what we're hoping to spend, and where our, where we're planning to be, and we're able to keep our costs as tightly controlled as possible. We're fortunate in that our software costs aren't climbing as much as we worried. We were able to get some pretty good deals. We were, I was here a few months back, we get, signed some three-year contracts on some of our software packages, and that helps us quite a bit with our long-term costs. We have six staff, four which are permanent, and two are variable hours, and we provide all the services of delivering our information to the public and our staff, and one of the big things we do is our geographic information system. There's three of us that work on that and deliver that data. So at the end of the day, our budget changed, just, I don't actually remember the percentage, but not a lot. It's mostly the increase with changes in salary costs over the year. I have, I'll entertain any questions you have about any parts of it, but...
Do you do a lot of mapping stuff for outside agencies, outside of county departments?
We do some, but not, a lot of agencies we just deliver data to, and they can do that for free. They can download it from us.
Okay.
We do do mapping and stuff for our school districts, and we help them, as well as our smaller cities, or smaller towns. We'll do some work for them. We don't charge them for that. We do charge them for printing costs if we're printing something.
Okay, that's, that's where I was going with this. I wanted to...
Yeah, if we print something for them, we'll charge them for that cost, but like, a really good example is Morehead Schools. Every summer this time of year, we produce all new maps with our enrollment areas, and, and those are delivered electronically to them, and then they put them in their parent handbooks, but that's something, we do that for all of our school districts. It's part of what we do.
What does it involve in other professional services?
Other professional services is contractual dollars we use, and it's usually used for some sort of application development, or a tool, or some sort of thing we, we need that we don't have the skills to do in-house. So instead of adding staff, we use that money for those type of things, because they're usually highly skilled things. A good example right now, we're working on a tool that will display on our website who's in our correctional facility right now, today. That's something that's been asked for, for a very long time, and we don't have the capability of doing that with the software systems we've got, so we had to bring in an outside contractor to help write the code that makes that happen. We do those, those types of jobs is what that comes from, and, and some of that is we look forward to next year, what we're estimating some of those things, 'cause we're trying to figure out what our needs are going to be a year or more from now.
Does that run pretty steady every year, forty thousand?
Yeah, sometimes a little less, depending what we, whether we, how well we can, 'cause every once in a while, we'll get something going, and then we'll be able to figure it out on our own, and then we, we won't have to spend the money, but, yeah, we, and we kinda, we'll work with that, and also, too, is we get requests for things. People ask us, can you do this, can you do this, can you do this, and we have to look at, well, we've only got this much money, so let's prioritize the ones we wanna do this year, and that's kinda how we work that through, and so we have some that'll stack up, and we'll try to work them in the next year, or the next year as we move it out.
So when you talk about those requests, Mark, are you talking about requests that come from county departments?
Yep, that, or, once in a while, we'll get requests from the citizens. I mean, they'll, they'll say, hey, can, can you do more, well, a big thing we're working on now with all of our stuff is, can we make it more mobile-friendly? We wanna be able to see those things on our phones. So like, just this last year, we rolled out new online maps that work on your phone instead of...
Well, that's good, that's good.
You know, so those are not coming from our staff, but they're coming from the outs... So, yeah, we're constantly trying to keep in tune with what our demands are, and we try to use our dollars as efficiently as we can.
I just wanna say that I appreciate, in the two years that I've been on this board, you consistently come in, your actual's been significantly under what you'd had budgeted, and I know it's difficult in lots of other departments to do that, but I just wanna give you my appreciation for doing that.
Well, thank you, thank you. Couple, couple other things I wanted to mention while I was here. I'm also responsible for the section corner remonetization program, which used to be called the county surveyor.
Right.
And we eliminated that role a couple years back, and now we have a forty thousand dollar line item, and we use that for that section corner remonetization, and we have a contractor engage that's doing that for us, and that new way we're doing it's working really well. We're using AE2S, was the firm that won the contract for a three-year term. We work with them in the spring, we come up with priorities of what we're looking at, where we have some needs, and then what they'll do is they'll work it in when their crews aren't busy, which traditionally is usually in the fall, after all the construction work is done. They've got survey crews that aren't tied up, so they'll do our work for us. Right now, we've got them working in the really challenging parts of our county, which is Eglin and Park Township, as far as control goes. It's very, some areas out there are very rugged, and there's not access even to some of the section corners. They have, they can't even get to them, and so they've been solely working through those, and we'll have that, more of that done this year.
What line item does that come under in?
I...
That's separate.
Surveyor.
One oh five, I think.
Yeah, it's a separate budget from mine. It's not in my budget, but...
Well, you have it in what, in sixty-one oh five?
It's the department, you know? Yeah, it's one oh five, I'm not sure what page that is, but if you scroll through, just maybe five more pages, it's...
Okay.
Zero one one five.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, just because it's, it's working great, 'cause we're getting exactly what we want and how, how we want it, and it's...
Page twenty-one.
So that's a, that was, that was a really good move on our part, I think, as an organization.
Oh, yeah.
Before that, did you have the county surveyor under...
Before that, did you have the County Surveyor under retainer or something like that?
Yeah, we had an appointed, appointed County Surveyor, and...
They have an annual budget, yeah.
They had an annual budget, and we, we kind of wanted it to go a little different direction, so we changed it up, and it's been working tremendously good for us as a county now. We're getting away better product than what we had had before. Besides that, thanks. I'm, I'm, I don't have anything else.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Dave. Nick, just in time.
I heard that in here. Yes, you're early.
Thirty more seconds.
Nice shirt you have on, Lori.
You have time to spare.
Yep. Good morning.
He's not giving me that time for another month.
Well, we don't have a lot on our agenda today, but we would like to get approval for the utility and parking lot work that we did last fall, was with key contracting. Eric does have specifics on that, and he'll kind of walk through it.
Yeah, I guess, just to kind of refresh everyone's memory on the project, this is the one we actually let back in September, and just to kind of go over the work, we redid the water and sewer in Eighth Avenue to make room for the new jail. We demolished, or disconnected all the water and sewer services for the demolished homes, and then we did the gravel parking lot in front of the existing LEC. And I guess everything's been completed, and the original contract was eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and the final amount to be approved is eight hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-three cents. So, if anyone has any questions on the work, or...
I think the work's been, been going well.
Yeah. I'll move to approve.
You have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Is this all part of the jail thing?
Yes. Yep, it all falls under the, it all comes under the jail and LEC, yeah.
Was it Eighth Avenue, I think it had to be closed down because the jail's going to over, go through it, so we had to rearrange some of the water and sewer, and we were actually quite fortunate, we came in with, you know, every time you do some digging, there's a lot of things you encounter. We did encounter another street underneath the old street, but there was a lot of efficiencies that were done after the contract was let, so we were able to come a little under the actual bid, so that worked out pretty good. It doesn't always work that way, luckily.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Uh, Dave, you had, all right, Frank's going to deal with that, I guess, in the, in the shop or something. You want to do that now?
Well, I think that'd be a good time to do it right now.
Okay, let's do it while he's here, then.
Yeah.
You're going to do it under your report, but why don't you do it?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Dave is, is closing on roll log, I believe, Wednesday.
Correct, yep, yep.
And we just thought for clarity that it would be good if the board would authorize him to close on both roll log and authorize him to close on roll log and Holly. You guys have approved the sale of it and all those kinds of things, but just so that we'd have an authorization for signing for the closing on.
And I think the Holly one's really coming quickly, I would guess easily within two to three weeks. I know, uh, the new buyer's bank has been calling me from Holly there. He's got about two weeks or so to get out of his existing building, so that's going to come right behind it, too. The other property, there is a land title dispute, but we clarified that with the attorney's office and with a, like, a title insurance policy, I believe, to help do the closing, and then the new buyer in roll log had some, he wanted to do some expansions to the property, so that kind of dragged out on his end, but anyway, we're finally to a point on that one, which will be nice, and then I think Holly will be shortly behind it.
Do we have a motion to approve the...
I'll make a motion to move away of closing.
Okay. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
So, I understand, we heard this morning that your highway department was out at Yulin that night of that storm.
Yeah, I was out of town, I don't know if you've been in touch with Brian a little bit on that, has he been declared a state emergency?
Yeah, I guess maybe you can just let them know a thank you from us for being out there and helping them assist with that.
Good.
Right? Thank, yes, Brian?
And Mr. Chair, again, I've, I've thanked them before for this, but the highway department, these two engineers, really stepped up and helped us with the road closings and the, and I know we've worked with Houston Engineering, and they've worked in concert with Mike Lev, but it's really been helpful to have the highway department techs on, on, on scene every day, and, and it's with this parking lots that are going on right now. So, they, they really stepped up in this project. It could have been very easy for them to stay off to the sides and us to contract for all of this stuff, but they, they haven't done that. They've just really been a team player in it. We really appreciate that.
Seems to be coming together pretty good out there.
It'll be done this week, and we'll be parking out next week sometime, hopefully.
Wow, yeah. Getting close.
Yep, getting close.
Thank you. Kathy, good morning. Kathy is here to request to fill a public health nurse position.
Good morning. You received the request, she is retiring, and this is a nurse that is working in our adult health case management in the Sessor area. The revenue that we receive is through the health plans, and it varies. Some of it is through time studies, some of it is per member per month, and some of it is a flat rate. Typically, in this area, we have revenue over expenses, so it covers all of the costs of her salary benefits and any of the miscellaneous costs. The individual that's retiring has a lot of years of experience, so we would anticipate hiring someone at a, a reduced salary, of course.
No question. Uh, in your agenda sheet, it says that the position's fully supported by your revenues, but you just said it's been typically covered by the revenues?
Yeah, the last three years, we've covered revenue over expenses.
In years that it doesn't cover, what is the difference?
Yeah, we didn't have all of the revenue sources we work with for health plans, so we receive revenue that covers all of those costs.
So, like, a fif- ten thousand, when it didn't cover it in that year? I'm just looking at what the difference in, in revenues was in that one year.
Yeah, I don't know. That would be a number of years ago that we had, we typically, and it may have been longer than that, we typically don't put any county dollars into this program area.
Motion for... Second. Motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign?
And Mr. Chair?
Oh.
The, the, the motion included backfilling if they do have an interim candidate, I'm assuming. It usually does.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I'm getting head nods, yes.
Okay, thank you. It's just so much easier.
Yes, it is. All right, thank you. Kathy, while you're here, we also have an agenda addition that I understand was at your request.
Correct.
And this is an amendment to the Southeast Human Service Center purchase agreement, or purchases of service agreement.
Correct. The initial agreement with Southeast of North Dakota was July of two thousand and fifteen through June of two thousand and seventeen, and what they will do is amend the contract when, they have usually a cap of money that they also amend to, and so you have, this will be the fourth amendment. You have approved previous amendments based on that, they're just out of, they're out of the, they have more clients that we have served than they have allocated in their contract. So, this is their fourth amendment, and it is actually for July first, and it is through September. So, I'm not sure if they're anticipating going to a different, their contract year's always been July through June, so they may be looking at it a new contract year, but this is at least through September of two thousand and seventeen, and the additional funds is one hundred and fifty-two thousand, as you see on the agenda information sheet. So, they, they will always contract the amount that we need. So, that amendment is, their initial amendment was eight hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and forty, and now with this additional one fifty-two, it's nine sixty-seven, one forty.
Kathy, do you know why, why we're doing these short-term amendments versus just to new contracts?
Well, part of it is they're...
What's the, there must, is there a concern by not entering into a longer contract?
Well, they have to assure that they're, they are going to receive the MA dollars through their legislation, so that's part of it.
Okay, so it's, so as part of our planning and staffing and everything, we're dependent on that revenue?
Correct.
And so, when we're looking at two thousand and eighteen, and we're not assured of anything through September of seventeen, and when it comes to this revenue, how do we deal with that?
Yeah, I think, I think what, I think what this one is, is they're probably going to start their contract year in September and then go until August, is what we're anticipating. So, they're changing their contract year. The last contract, as you can see, is for two years, and they're just estimating how many clients we would serve based on their previous years, so that's part of it. They've always increased our amendment amount.
Well, I would think they would know in North Dakota because their's, their session's over.
Yeah, right, their session is over, right, so that's why they, they, we used, we utilized more funding than they had put in the contract because of the additional clients. We're serving a lot of clients through Southeast, so, but they've always been good with their amounts of money that they provide us based on our overage.
I'll move ahead, approve the amendment.
I have a motion to approve the amendment, and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion first.
Thank you.
Kathy? All right, we'll move into committee reports. Let's see here. Commissioner Bros, you were gone all last week.
Yeah, I can give my report. I mean, evidently highway tracking and must have been, buffer must have been covered last week, so, other than that, I can talk about the notification if you want to do that.
We'll move on to Commissioner Haney.
Okay. I was on the alternate for the SWCD, that's the Soil and Water Conservation District, and Commissioner Munjo was tied up with the fair last week and requested that I attend the SWCD meeting, which I was able to do for an hour, and while I was there, profit came and applied for approval for the Horizon Shores Development Project just south and east of the Holiday Station property. The approval was denied and will be considered at the next meeting. The Bowser representative was there, and he said their application was out of sequence and issues regarding wetland mitigation needed to be addressed before approval. It was tabled until the August meeting. There's a tiny wetland right along the exit from I-94 on Thirty-Fourth Street on the northeast corner of the intersection, and it is a very low-grade wetland, but nonetheless, it is qualified as a wetland, and they need to deal with that, and they offered to put property up to the north in that larger area that they're looking to develop, but...
That's right between the off-ramp and the Holiday Station.
Yes, mhm, but it was considered out of sequence by Bowser, and SWCD recommended that we table it for a month, and so that's what was done. And so, that's my report.
Thank you. Sunday, the Extension Committee scooped ice cream, so Frank and I were scooping ice cream at the county fair. That's my report.
I had a Economic Development Corporation executive meeting, and it was a fairly short meeting, and committee reports from the various departments there, and then we started talking about next year's budget, and, and then I had a Northwest Regional Radio Board meeting and various business discussed there. The main thing for us was, the process has been ongoing to meld the North Dakota system and the Minnesota system with the eight hundred megahertz radio system that Minnesota has had and that we've just become involved with, so that's been going through various state committees, and everything went well. The board voted unanimously to approve continuing to move forward with that. There's a few more hoops at the state level to jump through, but it was a fairly lengthy process, and I think the reason it's gone so well is because Lieutenant Green from our sheriff's office and Lieutenant Jacobson from the Moore Police Department put in a lot of work and effort in making sure everybody knew how important it was to our region to have this go through, so that was it for me.
Last week, I had the, the diversion authority met, and we discussed further, the executive director search, we had an update on that, and there's three candidates that are going to be coming to Morehead, Fargo-Morehead on the twenty-fourth for interviews by the entire board. It's starting on a Monday morning, and it's supposed to go throughout the day, with follow-ups on Tuesday, and then we'll see if, if they're ready to select one of those as a, as a final candidate for, for the position. Then there was also some contracting actions that had to do with the Oxbow, Hickson, Bakie Ring levies, which were authorized through the court process to proceed. There's areas that are still on hold, but the areas that were allowed to proceed, there's been contracts, bids that have come in on that. There was some discussion about in, on Cass County Road sixteen and seventeen, the realignment. And then the other one was the diversion authority agreed to continue the contract with Frederickson and Byron Attorneys on, on behalf of the Minnesota, was something that the city of Morehead really wanted, to keep them on, on board, and so we, you know, we got, the diversion authority to authorize that agreement for the next year. That was pretty much all that transpired at that meeting. I did attend also the Northwest Regional Radio Board by ITV here at Courthouse. There was some early concern by Lieutenant Green that we wanted to make sure that the things that Commissioner Wayne talked about, that was for the good of our eight hundred and fifty megahertz, eight hundred megahertz deal, and with the dispatch that we have in Cass County, none of that, we wanted to make sure that all worked out, so it turned out it did, so. And I do want to, I do want to comment, I heard this morning, you know, just an update, some information for the full board. The fact that we had this meeting on a Monday morning apparently doesn't do real well with certain people getting ready to have stuff available for us for a Monday morning meeting, so it's been suggested that if we, if we do change our meeting date in the future to maybe look at a date other than Monday, to go to, well, Wednesday or Thursday, I think that's, I, I think it has to do with timing of things being able to be presented here, probably through the voucher system and everything else, so I think we, just a piece of FYI that we should keep that in mind moving forward. I was not aware of that, but, okay.
All right. So, with that, then we'll go to Mr. Berg.
Mr. Chair, just in relation to that, I received no feedback on this.
Okay.
I don't know what the departments were, or what.
Yeah, I can share with you, but it's, it's just something for consideration.
Sure. I'm sure any day out of a normal Tuesday was going to interfere with somebody, so that's usually how it works. Just a couple of quick things, I guess. Budget meetings ongoing. I had a couple evaluations, personnel, attended the diversion meeting, and worked with Lori on establishing some of this budget information, and in regards to that, you did receive the departmental goals and objectives from each of the departments, plus the tally, and, but just to remind you that the numbers look big, but if you remember right, the four hundred and eighty thousand dollar abatement program is in the figures, and you have been funding that out of reserves. You did fund three hundred thousand dollars in the general revenue fund last year, two hundred from general revenue and a hundred from public health, and then you did use, utilize... utilize two hundred thousand dollars from reserves for the social service budget, so that's just about a million dollars that are in there that wasn't in there last year that are part of the expenditures, so you'll need to, you know, consider that as the budget moves along, but if you think the numbers are up quite a bit percentage-wise over last year, just keep that in mind, that if you take some of those out. I know Rhonda particularly doesn't like to see that high percentage increase, because we put the reserve usage back in there, and if you decide to take it out later on, that's your choice, so just a reminder on that. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Mr. Chair?